I'd like to call me into order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes. Accept a motion to approve the minutes from the September 27th school board meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion by Matt, thanks Matt.
Second.
Thanks Brian. Any corrections, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Next, accept a motion to approve the non-public minutes from the September 27th school board meeting.
Make a motion.
Matt with the motion.
My second.
Tony, thank you.
Matt, I'm sorry, was Matt at the last meeting?
I was.
Yep. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? And finally, accept a motion to approve the return to public meeting minutes from September 27th, 2017.
I don't think we technically have those because they're non-public, because that's the beginning of the meeting and then we just went straight into the regular meeting minutes.
Yeah, it describes that.
Thank you.
Alright, then we'll skip that motion. We don't have any correspondence that's new to you Judith?
I just have the NHSBA, the New Hampshire School Boards Association, reminding everyone that there is a training on budget workshop, budgeting workshop on Wednesday, October 18th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in Concord. If anybody wanted to go, they can just let the S.A.U. know and we'll set up the training for you. It's forty-five dollars, but the district will fund that, so it's in your budget.
Is that at the propony? Is that where they hold those? Not beyond mall?
Let's see, it usually isn't at the propony, so I'd have to check on that, it doesn't even say where it is.
Is that something we would want to let the budget committee members know as well? Or no? Is it just school board?
Oh, it's the school board.
Oh, it's just because it's the school board association?
Right.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Deb, do you have anything for us today?
The audit is complete for this year, just waiting for the reports, which usually around December, we get the final reports. They did talk about coming in, because we tried to get the auditors in last year and if you guys would like, they will come in and they can present the report to you. So we'll try to set that up. And we're just starting the 2018-19 budget process. I sent out all the information to the teachers who will be working on, and departments working on their budgets that they'll submit to the administration by November 1st and then administration will go through it and have it all together for you guys by end of November, for the budget workshops.
Okay. Thanks Debbie. Judith?
Yes, we had, before I, with the memo, I just wanted to remind everybody that you have bids for the Intecom system within your packet.
Yep.
So everyone can look at that and when we get into the new business, hopefully the board can move forward with a vote on the vendor tonight.
Okay.
And then your next, your next vote would be to have a public hearing at your next board meeting, prior to the board meeting, so we can move forward with that. Let's see, there is also a chronology of, Deb had gone through the actual report, Johnson Control Report, and we actually went through all of the reports. And since we started this whole process on the biomass, so that's in the packet, I'll get more in depth in that when we get into the biomass on the agenda. Just an FYI, that this time, the 1984 tractor didn't really go.
Right.
The last time was approximately about a year ago and it ended up, we were able to put some Band-Aids on it and use it for a year after we had stated that it had broken. But now, it's really gone, so just to let the board know that it will be, Mark will be looking into purchasing that. It's approximately two thousand, so it fits within your policy for him to move forward with that.
Are you going to ask us to? Do we have to do that out of trust fund, or are you going to ask us to do it?
No, for the budget.
Out of the current budget?
Yeah.
Are you asking us to approve that tonight?
No, just letting you know that that's what we're doing.
Well, for next year's budget.
Well, no, we're going to do it now.
It's under the amount that's required for us to do.
But it's under the amount, usually it's five thousand or more.
Okay.
That you have to do an RFP and send out to bid, but now, since it's less than, it's just a purchase item that.
Okay.
On the budget of this year.
Okay.
Went to the, I attended the Brad Kidder Law Conference and every year, they give an award to an attorney for all of this service and investment in public school education. And this particular year, one year they gave it to Dr. Mark Joyce, who was Executive Director of the NHSAA. This year, they gave it to Mike Morgan, in memory of Mike Morgan, so it was very nice. Very nice ceremony. I did leave, I did include some of the training within the packet, so just, you know, we threw that information. Also went into, part of the training, went into some of the new laws that were coming out, the keynote regarding program and whatnot, so in nineteen, 2013, the district will be looking for money, well, it will be part of your adequacy, so as far as money towards the full-time kindergarten. Right now, they will be funding part-time kindergarten and they will be funding full-time as well, so we will be getting money for full-time.
Great.
And just some other things that came up, was a dual enrollment, which we're moving forward with. This district already does a lot of this anyway, so it's not new to this district, but...
Is that the Running Start, the Running Start programs?
Yeah, and so, it's just letting everybody know that they have that opportunity and that the state will be financing that.
So I wasn't, I wasn't aware that there's a, there's a class limit that we, that we pay for, a lot of classes per student. Did I read that we pay for two classes, two Running Start classes for students if they want to take additional, it's on their own? Is that right?
Well, this, that's what the state says, the state says this. This is from the training, from the state, so the DOE will be, will funding, the student will receive funding for up to two classes in 11th grade and up to two classes in 12th grade. Now, that could be up to the district, whether they want to move forward.
Right.
You could do more.
Exactly.
And we'll probably be looking at that also too, when that comes up, we'll have to look for that one.
Okay.
Because that was coming up in, we have to do that before July 2018.
How many students take advantage of the Running Start courses?
Four or five.
Just roughly, I know.
Yeah, there's, we have students taking, and we have a couple of students who are taking it through a stats class that we offer in our math department, and I believe there's one other that we have.
You know AP Bio, last year my son did that.
Yep.
Able to get...
Yep, we have, I think right now we have, I think we have seven AP offerings within the high school.
And they get college credit for all of those courses?
If they pass though, the difference between AP and Running Start is, Running Start is with an injunction with the community college and you have to follow, the instructor has to meet certain standards. And as they go through the class, they have to have, just through the ratings, when the class is over, they get that, get the, you know, they need a certain rate in the class, they get the college credit as well as the high school credit. The AP courses, you take the course, but you know, in time you get the, that, you know, as far as college credit for the AP, you actually take the exam. And some schools, it's on a one to five scale, some schools will take the three, some will take four, some will only take the five. So there's a little more, a couple of extra layers to the AP.
Okay, everything else that I have is within your agenda.
Yep. Thanks Judy. Mr. Curry?
Two things for you this evening. One is October 6th, we had our In-Service Day. The elementary staff was working for the training for, with PBIS. Our high school staff was working for the training that started off with Mr. Aldridge regarding to our school website, making, making some adjustments that having time for teachers to work on their teacher webpages through our Google platform. So he was able to kind of get them started and we had some teacher leaders in the building who were able to kind of provide some extra support throughout the day. Also, with that day, we would make sure that we had, as far as our web to school, parent portal is open, so parents are able to sign up, as we talked about at the Elko Open House. And now they've had the ability, that is live, so parents can look that up. Our next step would be to have students, be able to kind of get them online, that'd be a little bit easier because we already have the login information, you know, for kids, we have their emails, that kind of thing. So that's going to be our next step with that. The other thing that I had is I met with the reps from Rapid Edge, which is our company that does our uniforms for all our athletic teams. They're doing, they're doing some different kind of contract work with schools in the North Country and also other places in the state of Hampshire where if schools are agreeing to only buy a certain brand for their uniforms, that they're giving kind of rebates back on other purchases that they make. And also having, where they will give that, basically out balances back to the school for either take, you know, money off of the uniform purchases or if they're going to do towards other types of gear. So there's some rebate program like that, so I want to kind of make the board aware of that and pursue that.
Great. Thanks Scott. Committee reports, we do have action items or policies, why don't we save them for last? Brian, do you have a facilities update or any information for us?
I think we can save it till after as well, because I got to come back with some stuff.
Okay.
That has to have action.
Okay. I had a question, just referenced last meeting, you mentioned we didn't get the lighting done, outside lighting?
I heard about that.
It's done.
Oh, it's done?
Done.
Oh, really?
The walkway.
Okay. Awesome, awesome, okay, cool. Any other, I know we got some biomass committee minutes and we got wellness minutes, were there any other committees that met other than policy? Alright, let's move on to policy. Apologize that I missed our policy meeting tonight. Tony, do you want to give everyone an update on that?
We just reviewed a number of policies, eight of them actually, that just had changes to do with law changes.
Okay.
Some of them have been updated in a number of years, so we're looking to bring those forth next time, as far, you know, with the updates that have been provided.
Okay. And so we have, in your packet, we have JJE-R, which is Senior Class Trip, and then we have EH, Public Use of School Records. And we went over those last time, they're on first reading, we've moved them here tonight for second reading, so they are up for approval. Any questions or comments or additions or changes anyone wants to see? EH is data management, JJE-R is, of course, Senior Class Trip. None, okay?
I'll make a motion to approve policy JJE-R, Senior Class Trip, and policy EH, Public Use of School Records, as presented.
Thanks Matt, motion by Matt, will you give a second?
I will second.
Thanks Brian. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Thanks John. And that is all set. Board action. Judy, what did you have for us? I know we had a... Bids is in our new business, but did you want to do that?
Uh, yeah, we could, yeah, why don't we do that? Switch it on a little bit, they have you two bids.
I had a question on the bids. It's a question I haven't the answer to. I wouldn't, well, I wouldn't even know how to...
That's good then.
That came out wrong.
So that's how it works?
I don't even know what we're looking at with those bids, I mean, they seemed, they were way off to each other. Like, Mark, can I ask you if you have any input?
Yeah, basically, when we first did it, when we first looked for bids, I called Arcom and I went around, I checked a couple of schools in the area, different things. Arcom is pro CAT 6 wire through the whole building. And they kind of sold me on that idea. We'd have to do some more research and talk with Canfield and with them. And you got to understand, these two people walked through the building with me and we talked about the different things and whatnot. And one of the things that Canfield explained was that wiring in the building that's usable is fine. The difference between Arcom and Canfield is that from the office to the control rooms, they're going to use the internet. Where this, Canfield is going to use the same wires that we've been using, okay? And he says all wires are going to be tested, if there's a problem with wire, we'll run a new wire. Other than that, he says it's the same equipment, just one's internet-based and one is more hardwired. I was sold on the internet, but the warranties are the same and Canfield's going to do the same exact thing that Arcom's going to do and half the price. It's almost like a no-brainer.
What's Trey's? Anyone know what Trey's thought are, these two? Because, so they're a little bit different projects, one is reusing cable.
Yeah, the, Arcom, what it is, is going to go internet to the thing, then we have to have a power supply in the room for the speaker, to operate the speaker, and it's not over CAT 6. We already have CAT 6 to the rooms, okay? And that would overload our system, we couldn't, you know, do all that with that. But we also have these other hardwired, which is in good shape. The failure we had was in the equipment in the office, that's where our failure is, okay? And Canfield's just going to be replacing that, using the wires and making sure everything's up to code and have it operational. And I think that's the way to go. We have to do something.
Right.
But they both heard the same thing, both Arcom and Canfield, had a choice of doing it either way.
Yeah.
And Arcom decided to go with the CAT 6 wire, which, you know, ten thousand feet, it's long.
Okay. What was Trey's thinking?
What was your opinion? I have a question.
Yep.
Is it going to, does this, do both of these include upgrades in the classrooms?
Yes.
Okay. Because we were sitting, talking the other day, the board was talking about not having some, you know, areas, we were saying the other day, there were some areas where if something did happen and someone was in that particular area, they wouldn't hear because it wasn't part of it.
Right, and that's, and that's kind of the issue right now, is that the coverage from the, from the current system that we have now, it's not operational throughout the building, or it's spotty as far as, you know, what happens. So I think, you know, you know, Mark and I have had a conversation around the two different, and I think, you know, Arcom kind of went the, they went with the, you know, with the everything, we were going to replace everything, we were just saying everything will be brand new. Canfield said there's some things that we can still use, and if obviously it's not working, that they will replace those pieces. You know, I think there's, and obviously, as the board has kind of seen, there's a bit of a difference in the bottom line for both. So, you know, the other thing that I think says, Canfield's done some work with us before, so they have, there's a level of familiarity with the building, so.
I may speak, they installed the other system and the system before that, plus they also installed, yeah, they have great service. Arcom has great service too, I don't want to knock them.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, for, you know, all those twenty thousand dollars, I think it's, it's going to do everything we need, it's going to have a remote.
How old is our current system that we're replacing?
Ninety-one is the closest we can figure out. When the amp went out, last time when the amp smoked, he had to search high and low and he found one in the basement in the back that was used. That's how outdated it is. They just don't make those components anymore, that's a different way of doing things.
Even, like, just the, I'll give you just a brief example, when, if we, we lose power, like, for Mrs. Vance to reprogram the bells, it is a analog, you know, one through, was it one through ninety-nine?
Yeah, she's got one through ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine steps to program our bell schedule. It's not like, she doesn't plug it up on her computer and go...
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have to be sold on replacing, because I agree that we do, I just...
Mark, I don't know, just do that, so, like, I think I agree with you in the Canfield, just the one, so they, they're confident that he can use, like, a lot of those same speakers and stuff, because that's like a big number in his.
Yeah.
And the Arcom is like, replacing seventy-four speaker systems and forty-seven call switches and ninety...
There...
So he thinks, like, so most of them will work once they're just brought back to life and maybe we have to take those rooms that have issues and it's...
And he's going to...
Thirty dollars for one speaker versus six grand for all of them, type of thing.
Right. He's going to replace the ones that are needed.
Yeah.
And he, he went through when we're in the rooms, he was checking all of them, I mean, he, the guy's very thorough, but he's the one that installed originally.
A lot of it.
Yep. So he knows where everything is, what the wires are and all that stuff. You know, Arcom, you know, that's top of the line, but I don't feel we need top of the line. I mean, Canfield has a system in there where we'll be able to purchase clocks that are going to operate and keep time. We have to change his clock by hand right now. You know, just a lot of things, remote cell phone, everything that Arcom's doing, Canfield's system will do, so it's kind of...
Are we looking to go ahead with the phone?
The add-ons?
The add-ons, since they're only thirty-three hundred dollars?
I would like to see that happen.
I mean, does that make more sense? I mean, it looks like most of it is just so that, well, one, you can communicate for, from a phone, so you can go hide in a corner and pretty much communicate in the system, so that seems to make sense.
We're not going to award a bid tonight, because we don't have the funds yet, we need to...
We have to select a bid though.
You have to select a bid.
Yeah. To go to the, to go to the trust fund.
Right, that's why we gave you the bids ahead of time.
Right, I, I agree, I thought we did something similar in the summer and we got a little pushback from community, why would we accept a bid if we don't have the money? So we did it the other way, we had a trust fund hearing first, and then that night later we awarded the bid.
No, that was with the windows and we were, it was a different circumstance. We didn't know, we, we knew we were going to do the project, we just didn't know when, and we wanted to have the flexibility to move when we wanted to move during this, but...
You can say it's pending, obviously, the trust fund here and that.
Okay.
So Mark's comfortable with the system, administration's comfortable with the system, with the, with the addition of the options?
I think we should add the options to it, too.
I also think, and Mark mentioned that, I mean, this is a considerably lower bid, and if, they're going to be using some stuff that they don't think we need replaced, but like he said, if they get in there and they need this cable, this box, they replace it, so I think whatever we...
Twenty percent on it's like twenty-nine, still a decent number.
Okay, that's what I was going to say, I mean, that's for a trust fund.
That's an extra, that gives them just under five grand.
Right, I didn't want to get in the situation where we approved a certain amount of money.
That'll happen next, right?
Right.
And that, that like five grand, and when you look at the other one, it seems to cover a lot of, like, what they're pointing out is the big dollar issues.
Okay.
Not that I want to end up there, but twenty grand, I think, from a construction standpoint, I mean, twenty percent is, is, it's like overhead and profit is the standard, is the Canfield protection number. If anybody else disagrees on that.
No, I think you're right, it's a safe cushion.
You know, and it almost, like, you hit like four grand, you're like, oh, if we had to do all the speakers for some crazy reason, you know, you had to do a portion of like the rack. And it's still eleven under the other bid. And the other bids, that's eleven, that's eleven under without adding on their add-ons, which are bigger.
Right.
They're forty-two and...
Good difference.
So they're fifty-four, you know?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the Canfield Systems bid for the Intecom, the replacement of Intecom System. Move that to trust fund hearing. Do you need a number on that right now?
No. So, motion to go into contract with...
Except the bid of Canfield Systems.
Motion by Matt, will you give a second?
Second.
Tony, thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So then we'll need to vote to approve or postpone a trust fund hearing for next meeting, which is the twenty-fifth, is the twenty-fifth?
I'll make that motion.
So Matt makes the motion to postpone trust fund hearing for 6:30 on 10:25 for the purpose of installing a new paging system. That's from Matt, give me a second.
I'll second.
Thanks Erin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Anything else for board action? Resignations, nominations?
No, you also have the Primex CIB agreements.
Yep.
That's another action on it.
Okay.
And that's a three-year agreement for an extension.
Right.
And it helps to stabilize our annual contribution, so there's a cap each year, so when we're budgeting for the workers' comp program and also the property and liability program, we're in the risk pools with Primex and have it with them. So, we'd have to accept the resolution to enter in a Primex cap agreement, it's like on the third page of each agreement.
It's capped at seven percent, is that, is that right?
It's up, ten percent.
Ten percent?
Maximum of ten percent. Currently, our property and liability insurance is about twenty thousand a year, and our workers' comp is about fifteen thousand.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution to enter the cap contract, Workers' Compensation Program contract with Primex and authorize Chairman Pickering to sign. You need Vance's signature on this, right?
Yep. Thanks Matt, give me a second.
Second.
Thanks Tony. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I have a question real quick, I guess it doesn't matter, is this, we're entering into a one-year contract?
It's a three-year.
Three-year contract?
Three-year.
Can we legally enter into a three-year contract?
Yeah, the way it's written, we can, because we're a municipality and...
I thought I read somewhere you couldn't do it.
No, we can, because we have...
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, the way, and again, they do this with all their public entities, so if something were to happen in the budget that it didn't get approved, that's, yeah, we can get out of that. Also, there's the property and liability program too, there's a workers' comp and property liability.
Yeah.
So there needs to be another one, because it's two separate agreements.
Oh, it's two separate?
Yes.
Oh, they're not, okay. So we just did workers' compensation, so we need property and liability.
I'll, I'll make the motion to enter an agreement with Primex for the property and liability contracts and authorize Chairman Pickering to sign on the board's behalf.
Thanks Matt. Will you give a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Erin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That's it for new business and board action, right?
Correct.
Okay. Continuing, we have a couple of things, the, we got the high school class schedule last meeting, so there's a lot to look at, so we were asked to come back this week after looking at it, any questions people had, comments, and then maybe administration can answer those for us. I'd like to concur with what Matt said last time, is that the numbers looked better than previous years, number of kids in classes. We knew I was going to be that standout just because of small school, but overall, the numbers were, I think on average, larger, spread out. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, the one comment I had, along those lines, as far as numbers, is when you look at the number of students in the TV class, you know, that's something we've been struggling with for years, you know, where they have three or four people in there. And I met Mr. Adams a couple of weeks ago and he is very excited about building the program, and I think he's been actively recruiting kids to get involved in the program. You know, he had a successful program in the last school he was at, so they're looking to get back into a lot more production than we've seen in years past, and you'll probably see a lot more of that popping up online, as close to just on the Channel 3, we've always talked about.
It already looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice to see that number growing again.
Yep. Any other comments or questions on the schedule? Any other comments or questions on the schedule? All right, moving on, we also had the student data report that was handed out. Any questions or comments on?
I'm giving, I'm passing out a student data, um, and we're gonna keep this on the agenda, because I'm only gonna go, I'm gonna go on stages.
Is this something, this is different from what we got last week?
This is the N W E A, which is your North, Northwest Educational Assessment.
Okay.
And for K through five, we do it three times a year. We do it in the fall to get a baseline, we do it in January to compare the programming, the local programming and curriculum and see how they're doing, and then we do it in June, May and June. And your score from September to May gives the district, each individual student's, student, um, learning, the growth rate. So like I was telling you, if you have, you know, you have kindergarten, oh, I shouldn't say kindergarten. Um, first graders coming to first, students coming into first grade, and they're at a kindergarten level. And by the end of first grade, they're at a second grade level. That shows three grade levels of growth, when you look at coming in kindergarten and leaving in second grade. At the state assessment, that does not show growth, it's only going grade by grade. So that's why we do the local standardized assessment, which shows the individual students. I didn't give you, obviously, individual students, but, but this is what we're, we're looking at now. If you think colors, green is good, red is not. So if you look on the outside of your circles, yeah, outside of your circles have green and red, we're looking at the green. So if you look at your first picture, it's, for example, grade one in the fall of two thousand sixteen, cause these are our latest scores. The last set fall and then the spring, and then we set, so the fall of grade one, the green, um, area is forty-two percent. Forty-two point three percent, and the spring, it was eighty-six point four. We're not up to the school board goal, which was ninety-five or ninety-six percent. But that was a, that was a good leap in first grade.
They're all gonna go up, it looks like.
They all go up. However, they're still going up, but what the teachers are now looking at is they're going up, but the growth rate, we're not closing the gap. The state tests assess the gap closure, these assess student growth rates. So this, this personalizes it more so, but we still have to be focusing on that state assessment, because we need to be closing the gap. And, and for some students, we are closing it, and some, you know, they're improving, but they're improving at the same rate as they go up to the grade. So they're, you know, if they were a year behind, they, they've made a year's growth, but they're still a year behind, type of thing. That's what we need to be watching for. And these give you all of your math and your reading, for K through five.
If you're in the red zone at the end, like, is that like you're a year behind? So, not theoretically a year behind, but like, are you, is that saying that you don't have all the?
You don't have all the skills, right, you're, you're, you're not as proficient with the skills, it may not be a consistent.
It might be one of those like topics or something.
Right, right, I mean, it, it would be something like if you were in the elementary school and you had to do carrying and borrowing. And you made a, you, you knew how to do it, but you made a lot of mistakes with forgetting to carry the one or forgetting to cross out, whatever. That may be, there's pieces of the skill, that means you're not proficient enough to move forward. So it's partially proficient, you know, or substantially below proficient, means that you're probably hasn't, haven't made much gain. You know, in that area. The other piece that, that we're also, look, we also look at, this is one of the things of that, when you dig, we have to dig deeper into the data. The next thing we're looking at with the state testing is we're looking at the individual questions of each, each assessment, so when we look at the individual questions. And these are examples, I only have, it's saying one's in color and one isn't, but we're looking at levels three and four. So when you, um, the goal is to get students into the three and four, levels three and four range. So when you do that, the state allows us, the assessment allows us to look at each individual question. See what students, you know, obtained the, the correct response, and what students didn't, and then it gives us a percentage of that. So we can go into each individual student's assessment and find out if Mary Jones, you know, had a certain score, what, in, in, in math, what questions did she not get, what concepts did she not get, and we break it down individually within the classroom, and within, for each student. So that's going to be the, the next piece of the digging deeper, we actually can go into each student's assessment and do that. So this was the N W E A, so next time I will, we'll look at the six through, um, twelve N W E A, so you can see that. The middle school and high school only take it in September and June, and that's for the purpose of finding the growth rate. Determining the growth rate of each student, so that takes care of your students that if they're at a high level and they're still, and they're, it'll still show, it may show a high level on the state testing, but it doesn't show a growth rate on the state testing. So at least this type of a test will say, yeah, they're up high, but they're not get, they're not exceeding. They, 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 the ability to move farther ahead be more challenged, and the N W E A gives us that information. So we'll find out if they're just maintaining at a ninety percentile or ninety-five percentile, or if they're continuing to move forward. So that we, we know who we need to challenge and, and who we need to, you know, um, work with for achieving, type of thing. So, two days a month is when the, when the teachers, like, if they have days, I mean, the day session that they had, some of that was data, reviewing data. And, um, and they'll be setting up two times a month where they can look at the data and continue to dig deeper.
When you look at it, if you had something that didn't grow much. Is that something you talk with the grade four, and try to figure out the program that they're doing?
Oh, absolutely.
Like if, it's clear, like, you look at some, I mean, I don't know, how the other side, but if it's, yeah, if it's not moving. If you don't see a significant growth in some kid, I mean, granted, I'm, I'm assuming, like, when I was in school too, that some kids, it's just harder.
Right, 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 right.
But if they're not moving in big group and it's kinda stagnant, do you look at, I guess, the curriculum system?
Right, your curriculum and your programming, and what the, what ends up happening, these are just, um, look, this, this looks at the the programming and, and curriculum and, and highlights where the needs are for the district to, to change, change. They also have weekly and bi-weekly, um, or, or, in, in bimonthly assessments uh, that measure the progress after a unit or a concept is, is taught. And then once that is taught and practiced and mastered, then an assessment comes. If, if the student, individual students, those assessments are looked at, and, and if the student didn't do it, then they, they go back to that now and be able to do that, and they have time during the day to work with those students, so they have to look at the data all the time. So, how did Johnny Jones do this week? Oh, no, he didn't do this, all right, let's put him, you know, right here, and we'll work with him for the week and see if we can catch up with the, that skill, and then eat, the kids change, different groups, they go to, you know, teachers and whatever and have different sessions depending on what, you know, where they act, it's quite personalized. But we are looking, digging deeper this year in that. Did you have to add anything, did I forget anything?
I, I have a couple questions and then maybe a comment or two. Um, this is, this is helpful, thank you for putting this together and sharing it with us. Do you ever go back and look at historical, like a three-year window of the same class and see, are, are we seeing this much growth every year? What's the learning loss between the spring and the fall? You know, how do you guys look at that, instead of just a snapshot of one year at a time? Do you take and follow this group? I know their names and their faces change sometimes a little bit, but.
Right, right, um, we also, this is just an example, so another one would be looking at the, the, um, the whole a three-year synopsis of this, so you look at an Excel sheet and it would have, this is year one, year two, year three. And these are the last three years, and this is what the kids look like in this grade, then you can see, this is what the kids look like in that grade, and then you can see what they look like in that grade, you can go up and look at individual students that way, and, or, you can look at classes as a whole and see if it's the same subject area or the same set of skills.
Okay.
Regardless of the student, that tells us it's a, it's a program, programmatic, systematic issue, you know, that we need to, to focus in on. And then, so we, we, we can, we look at it in all those different ways that, that you're asking questions on.
The, the other, just a comment, um, I mean, there's, there's some, there's a, there's a lot of good shift from proficient, you know, proficiency throughout here. What I have, what I do notice though is that those that start proficient or are proficient with distinction, those it doesn't seem like there's a lot of people shifting into the higher ends. There's a lot of shift from the lower ends into the middle.
Right.
But there's not a lot of shift from the higher, there's not a lot of kids moving to blue from green.
Right.
Um, and I guess, you know, are we, is that something we're looking at too? We usually, we, at one time, we had a program, I don't think it exists anymore, but we had, um, a program for kids that were, that were able to do more, and we'll form out of classrooms and having, you know, that type of service or whatever it is for that.
And what, what we do have is, what you have in place now is you have your Title One math teacher, not parent. You have a Title One math, I mean, Title One reading teacher, and then you have a reading specialist. So the reading specialist and, and both of the other, um, teachers will, one's in math and one's in reading, sorry, so you have that. Those, those two teachers will go in and do assessments at the beginning, do a skill, take those kids above and beyond the classroom instruction that they're having. So they just don't say, oh, okay, you're gonna get Title One, it's supplemental, so they get the classroom instruction, then they're going to get the extra time with another teacher who just focuses on the math, and they won't be missing any other subject area, you know, while they're doing that. And then that, that's for the students who are at the low end.
What are we doing for the kids, what I'm saying is, we're not moving kids into the higher ends.
Oh, you're saying you're not moving them to the higher.
From, from this, what I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, we're doing a really good job at moving kids to become proficient.
Right, right.
What we're not, what I don't see is, I don't see, I don't see the blue slice growing. Do you know what I mean? I don't see, I see yellow growing, uh, and I see green growing a little bit. But I don't see blue or green, or, you know, the, the higher, the kids that seem to be in those areas, moving, shifting into blue. So what are we doing to challenge those kids and to make sure that they're getting what they need as well to really push them forward?
Right, right, and what we did a couple of years ago was we brought in, in, in enrichment.
Right, that's what I was talking, yeah, we used to have that.
And part-time enrichment, and, and that was a two-year plan. And the classroom teacher went into all of the classes and did enrichment activities within the classroom. So it was embedded training for each of the teachers. During that time, we, we had changed, if you remember, we changed, we went and, um, went into the next generation science curriculum.
Yeah.
So we had just implemented that as well. So you had the high school science teacher as well as the enrichment teacher working together to go into the classrooms and work with the teachers and, and moving forward with the, with the science. Um, in the meantime, we've also brought in, um, now that that's, that teacher is now on a regular classroom.
Right.
So the embedded training is, is still there, because the purpose was, it has to be embedded within the curriculum, not just science. You know, or, or, or STEM, so that type of, um, thought process is in so that, so that when the teachers in classrooms do have, um, students that are ready to move to the next level, or can be challenged, that they will have little areas within the classroom in which they can be challenged with different projects that they can be working on. Also, um, Carol Smith has taken on a group of students who, uh, who are ready to be challenged. And she works with them as well now, with the, um, computer and technology and whatever. So we're getting those programs in place, the, the trick of it is, is to try to get those programs in place and, and can, and develop systems so that they can continue. You know, so that you're not bringing in somebody for just a certain amount of time, or, or whatever, it's more embedded within the overall classroom.
Could we see, uh, maybe at the next, I'm sorry, it's getting a little comfortable. Could we see, maybe at the next meeting, could we go back and see the snapshots of time when the enrichment, uh, program was running and see what these charts would look like then?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
I just, what I don't wanna see is, I don't want, I, I, this is, there's a lot of good stuff in these charts, and there's a lot of good stuff in these numbers. I just don't wanna see everything, I don't wanna be, you know, happy and complacent with getting everybody to the middle.
And that's what.
Getting the kids to the top too.
Correct, and, and I, and that's why I want you to be, be very careful, this is our, you know, I, this is just a guide.
Right.
The goal we're looking at is, are the state tests.
Right.
Because that, that has the rigor, and that has taking these skills and applying.
Okay.
And that's what that, that state test is, is looking at as well.
And the, um, the, what was it, smarter balance that we got, that we received last time, this year?
Yeah.
So, I know with, um, there's more city, right? I mean, there's no, that went away with the waiver in New Hampshire, right, the city? So is there now a program in place where if, if they look at numbers, and I don't know that we fit it, but is there something to say, okay, they're underperforming, or this, and then there's a, there's a state plan that says you have to meet this, this, and this?
Right.
Is there something like that? What is it and where are we?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
Cause a lot of the stuff has disappeared.
Yeah.
So, um, I think as soon as they, now that these results have come out, like I said, remember, this just came out last, last Monday. So what they're, the state's gonna do is look at, okay, what do we have now? Because some of these schools have been in those types of programs, and they're going to get off, this was the first year they could get out of that program. Um, but they haven't stated what that's going to look like, and what the programs, what, what type of support they're going to give to other districts.
Okay.
And what the cutoff is gonna be.
Right, how many years it's gonna be before, I mean, we don't need to wait for the state to say that we could challenge our kids and put things in place, but is there gonna be something that's gonna, you know, some, something that's gonna be put in place?
Right.
Um, or deployed at our school that we're gonna have to.
I mean, we're certainly gonna look for anything that possibly we can get from, say, you know, as far as support goes. We'll see what they've, what they're gonna come up with as far as, as we know, nothing has been stated or moving forward, have been. It's no plan, have you heard of anything of the principals?
No, no, and it'd be interesting to meet with the principals, the North Country principals on this Friday, so I don't know that might, that's always the I mean, obviously, with, with the, the change at the state level.
And the test too, we don't know what the test is yet, right?
Yeah, so it's kinda made for some interesting, you know, a lot of folks, the, the, the questions that you're asking, you're not the only one asking those questions.
We're asking them too.
You know, I think, most superintendents are asking it, boards are asking it, community members, principals, so these aren't, these aren't new questions. And we're by far not the only ones asking, cause I think just in general, folks are looking for some kind of guidance, you know, what, where, where do we stand with this? What is this, you know, there's something, like you said, we can go through some of the scores, both of the smarter balance and S A T results that you have from the last meeting. The new, the, the map testing results we have in front of you for tonight, there's some good things you can pull out of it, there's some things you could look at and say, hey, we need to get better at. But I think in general, from the state perspective, I think, you know, I think every district is looking for a little bit of guidance, and kinda, hey, what's, where are we going next?
I, I think it would be interesting to, to see if, if there was any shift into the blue or more greens when, when we did have the enrichment program.
Right, that's interesting.
I'd be interested to see that.
The other thing, I'm curious, I don't think, I think you kinda just touched on it a little bit, but when the new state assessment test, we don't know what it's gonna be. I mean, my only concern, I'm sure you guys have the same thing, is this information is great, we don't know yet if it's gonna correlate to. I mean, I'd like that we put a lot of work into where are the areas on certain tests that our kids scored low. It might not correlate next time we're out.
No, I, I don't think you're gonna be able to compare from year to year, right now, we, we had three years, so this was the first year of baseline, solid baseline. And now next year, it's gonna change.
Yeah, unbelievable.
And then you go to the other.
What's the reason for, I mean, I, what's the reason for cost, right?
They put it out in cost, they put it out.
That's the reason.
Contract?
Yeah, so like smarter, smarter balance was under, it was a, it was a contract, and they.
Three years.
Three years, the bids went out, and here's what we're bidding, and.
That's the only sad part, is we're.
Yeah.
We're testing our kids on maybe a great test, but it's, they're given, because the test a little bitter.
Right.
I mean, I, I do think though, I mean, then I think that just a little bit more honest. I mean, I, I do think though, I mean, then I think that just a little bit more onus on our, our local assessment for the map testing. Because, you know, even though the the state test is maybe changing and has changed over the last few years, the map testing that we'd be doing at a more local level is gonna remain relatively consistent, so.
So what do we use for those, like those interim measures? We use the map testing, what else do, what else are we using at the school consistently to check the progress of the kids?
As far as, I mean, you're gonna have, you know, your, your, your local assessment for that, you'd see would be, you know, we didn't have map testing. Um, then you're also looking at, you know, then there's also you're looking at, you know, individual, like classroom assessments. You know, and you're talking about like, you know, with teachers meeting at, you know, when you have your content area, you know, aligning, having, making sure like your curriculum is aligned. So, you know, when your kids are being assessed throughout, that you have that kind of consistency, like, you know, so when they leave a certain grade level, they should have the expectations of that sort of skills.
The elementary has a lot of different assessments.
They do.
I mean, I can, I can, Dibbo, Spontis, Fennel, Ames Webb.
All of those.
Quite a few of them. Um, middle school and high school have Ames Webb as well.
Yeah.
And that's something where it's, um, it's web-based, so they can get on and check where they are as far as here, you know?
Right.
What skills they've, they've attained to move forward, what's up.
And it's important there, and I'm not suggesting it isn't important, but I think it's crucial in the elementary school, because.
Absolutely, that's why, and, and, you know, I think.
Because if you, you know, if we can't, if we can't find the levers to pull while they're in elementary school, the likelihood of being able to to do that later on becomes, you know, less likely.
More challenging.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback off what Matt was saying about the enrichment and if we can come up with that data over the years that program was in place. Um, because I think that, you know, for years, there was a lot of kinda, you know, clamoring for something like that, to hit that, fill that void. And I think that that enrichment program was very well received, um, by the students who partook in it and the parents. And then when it kinda went away, yeah, I think there's, it's kinda left a little bit of a void there. I'm sure there's other things filling it, but I think, you know, if we have the data to kinda support it, other than just the feel-good that everybody had about it, and it's the discussion that maybe we could be having come budget time, you know, we've hired, you know, you know, teachers to help out in other classrooms in underperforming situations that I think it's money well spent for helping the, the other end of that spectrum as well.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with that, that's, that's.
Okay, biomass. Does committee have a, some info for us?
Oh, go ahead, Brian, did you?
Oh, you can touch on whatever you need to first if you want.
Um, what Deb did was go through, uh, create a chronology of the wood heating and alternative heating. And this goes back to October two thousand sixteen. You know, we, we had the report on, and and this start, we, we did this chronology because we had to respond to the state. We report to the state on a, on a regular basis with our tanks. So they contacted us and we know, we've moved forward, we did the chronology and then, um, gave the state the information that they needed to assure them that, that the board is not just saying, uh, who cares, you know, type of thing.
We just had to respond to them today, actually, with something else. That's why we went back and did the chronology and and looked at our last correspondence with them. Um, actually, it was in February, and then they're following up on that. We said we, we're gonna postpone, they gave us an extension with the oil tanks, we said we're gonna look at this biomass project. So we just kinda gave them an update, and as we were doing that, we gave ourselves an update on, on where we're at with that project.
So the, the chronology kinda gives everybody a picture of what the reports are about, uh, around basic, on chronology.
And on page three of the chronology, we did go back after we got, you know, we had the executive summary report from Johnson Controls. And we, and we went back, because we had some questions too, and you guys might have some, but like, what should be our next step now? And we had the biomass committee and and Brian can report on that, but we said, okay, what do we do now? Okay, and and they pretty much outlined, I, I just kinda copied and pasted the email, um, of what they, you know, as far as issuing an RFP for performance contract. And then, um, I asked them for a sample, so they gave us a sample RFP, they gave us the law. So they gave us some good information here. So we just gotta figure out if that's, you know, the next steps that we wanna take to keep moving, yeah.
So I think from our standpoint, um, as of what we talked about with our biomass subcommittee, the other day, um, we came up with some things that stuck out and, um, one thing we wanted to do is, is actually be recharged, I guess, with what we can actually look at. The original charge was just talking about the biomass like a wood burner, and that's it. But we kinda came up with that prior to getting like the last report and, and with the people that are targeting, especially, you know, having Stuart there has kinda put a bunch of things that, you know, maybe it's not just looking at the, the wood burner, but a system. So if we can just go ahead and look at other options, I guess, versus, so it might be looking at oil or looking at something else, but, um, under the charge that we're currently under, it kinda just leaves us focused on one thing that it's really even, at this point with all this other information, it's really hard to talk about that one topic as the people that have sat in on that meeting know. Because that piece of it, just looking at the wood burner, it doesn't really fit the picture right now. Because it, it, we could say that that, we could just look at that and say that this is what it's gonna do for the wood, and this is what it's gonna cost, and I can present that to you. But then we have to make a decision to start a whole nother project, not in that subcommittee, but even as the board. We recommended that, we're not gonna, that the wood doesn't work. Well, then that down the road leaves us with, now what are we gonna look at? So I guess I'm asking if, if we can be charged with just looking at a system in general, but different options. You know, there's other options out there, maybe it's, we can come to the board and I can say, you know, we talked, the wood thing seemed good. This is the positives for it, these are the negatives, but if we look at propane or we look at X, Y, Z, these are the other benefits.
So do we have any of the positives or the negatives for the wood part?
No, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Because, well, we've met only twice for like one hour. So basically, we've met every week since we last saw you, we've, we've met every Tuesday except for yesterday. These people are putting time in and and it's good, and we're getting a lot of good stuff. But it's really hard to just talk about the wood thing without like the direction to go. Because if we're not gonna go with that direction or we don't know what kinda system we actually need, then it might just be a waste of that conversation. Basically, I just wanna know if, if it's all right, I guess, to charge us with just looking at it as like a heating system versus just one item and utilize the knowledge of like Stuart and the guys to say like, well, you know, I've done it, the heat is here, but this, you know, but maybe we look at it, you can't, right now, I can't compare it to an oil because I'm not allowed to. All we can do is say that the wood works at such and such a school, you know? And how much do you, how much information does the board want? That's the first thing I have to ask today. The second is, along the lines of what we did here, which we printed up, um, if you look at the total project and we kinda talked about it and and I talked about with Judith and stuff, we clearly need a something and we're, we're on the clock. And being on the clock, we, this year's vote in March is out of the question. So earliest would be twenty nineteen to get a vote out. So what we would like to do is, and we kinda came up with a timeline, the timeline is like, if we can have an estimated course by cost of having a, um, feasibility report done by today, which we have, um, it actually came in, it can be done for five thousand dollars, not to exceed. So with that, we can actually approve it today. But if we bring somebody in today, then we're hoping that we can get it out to bid this week. If we can get the project started, you know, say by the twenty-fifth meeting, you know, if we can get an approval on a group to do it, um, then we can actually performance track for this winter. Because if we don't do that, then we miss out on this winter. You know, so, so getting somebody in line in April doesn't really help us, because now it's gonna push in all those dates, now we're gonna roll back another year. So it, from my.
So what are you, what are you looking to?
Well, for the, for the one is to just get approved on a vote that we can go ahead, I don't know how to took, to word this. Go ahead with a, the vote to move forward with hiring an engineer to perform a feasibility study.
Feasibility of what, I guess?
So they're gonna look at the envelope of the building, what's our actual heat loss, what kinda system does the school have? It's kinda take, the one that you, that you guys had the chance to read was like the walkthrough.
Right.
This one, they're gonna watch our oil costs compared to the temperatures, and they'll take like past records. They'll, um, I think they set up like some sensors, they do probably smoke loss techniques, which you can like pressurize rooms and see where you're getting losses. What they're gonna do is give you the actual like hard numbers for us of what needs to get done from an engineering standpoint.
But does, is that gonna have, are those hard numbers gonna have any impact on what system we go with?
No, they're gonna tell us, like, system-wise, I guess they're gonna tell us how much BTUs we need.
Right.
What parts of the system have, are failing, um, but not as far as the, whether you're burning oil, you're burning gas, you're burning paint. It's the first step before you hired anybody to come in and size the system anyway.
Right. I mean, I guess, I guess my concern, I'm, I'm a little bit confused.
So this isn't really, this isn't really like a, the subcommittee type question, this is more of, we've looked at a timeline.
We're gonna need that regardless of what we did.
Otherwise, we, we basically, everything else has got the brakes on. So like, if we don't wanna go forward, I guess, with the feasibility, and I, I might be wrong, then that tight timeline that we have kinda laid out would be like the attempt to get somebody in to study this. Then we can talk about this again down the road, but reality is we, we would be looking at doing it again, say, next November.
So there's two separate.
Because you need the, we can't be unoperational to have this done. If it, if we like waited until, I'm not trying to pressure, but if we waited, we kept pushing it off and say, you know, four weeks from now, we decide to, okay, I guess, we should do this thing and it's gonna cost us around five grand. We may have missed the window to start studying the school in the course of the winter.
Is, is this what the biomass committee is suggesting or?
Well, in, in essence, we're suggesting going forward with something like this before we even get into a discussion on. This because came out of like, when we started to try to think about like, all right, well, we need to have a system. Well, what system do we need, um, well, it doesn't really help without actually having more data. And I think when we first put the committee together, it was just looking at the wood, but post the last R meeting and prior to the first time that we sat down, then the report came out and talks about all these other things. They kinda just changed like our, like the focus, like, do we need to just look at? Basically, if I sit with the group and we, and we talk about the wood burner, which I'll do, if that's what we choose to do, and then we'll come back and report and say that the wood thing sounds like a great idea, we still have to do this. If I come back and say the wood burner is a horrible idea, maybe we're gonna look at something else, we still have to do this.
So that's, yeah, that's, so, there are two different things here. So the feasibility, we're gonna need to do that regardless of what we do.
Regardless.
And we, and we need to do something about our heating system.
Assessment of our current.
So it's completely separate, it's not tied into any project.
Yeah, this isn't just talking, this is no project.
So, but my concern is that we've had two meetings on biomass, and this isn't being critical, but my, my concern is that we've had, you know, there was a lot of input from, you know, the people that show up at these meetings that we wanted to look at this biomass stuff. Um, and we haven't really done that yet, and we're already starting to pivot and open up the, the net. And we're widening the net now to all the, you know, to other possibilities, which could be fairly endless. But we haven't even, I don't even have, we don't have anything on, I mean, have we talked to other schools that have implemented these?
Well, this, I'm like, I guess from my standpoint, I, I'd say we put the brakes on any discussion. We can't talk about something because we're talking about something that, if you're gonna build a house, or we, we're gonna do something, we just say, I wanna like have geothermal, it's a great concept, and that's all that's been done for the last year here, has talked about a great concept. But the reality is, we don't have an application for it until we know if it, if, say, the guy does a feasibility study and he says you're gonna need two wood burners that are three times the size of the other things, could very well happen, it's kinda far-fetched, but, well, that would take that whole conversation away. So talking about the wood fire right now exclusively, or talking about oil exclusively, or talking about any option.
I s- I see what you're saying.
We, we've discovered that we, we, the last year, we, you kinda put the cart before the horse. The wood fire stuff came in as a big subject, we had people talk about it here, tell us about how great it is, but the reality is, the building hasn't been looked at.
Right.
To see what the feasibility of even using these projects are.
I guess I would agree, I mean, it sounds like that's something we need to do anyway, is the study. And I'd be okay with that, but just to use, piggyback on something else, you said, we're gonna have to do it anyway. So if we do that feasibility study for the winter on, on what's happening now, we're still gonna need to do the biomass stuff anyway later, else we can't. I mean, I guess, so what's, what's the committee gonna do throughout the year, they're not gonna?
Well, we can still go ahead and visit, we had talked about visiting some places, I've gotten some information.
That's, that's what I would suggest, is if we're gonna do that route, we should still, we have that committee that's willing to get together. We should still visit schools and ask questions and, I mean, we can get that information before our actual winter study is done.
Yeah, and, and.
I don't wanna sit on biomass, because it's a biomass, biomass committee. You know, I don't wanna park in the garage and forget about it.
No, but I guess the, the other thing is, can, can the biomass committee not be called that and maybe be charged with just looking at a heating system?
I think, yeah.
I guess, the thing is, you took, brought in people that are theoretical, like, that have more expertise than us. And, and said, here's like what I like, and believe me, I'm all for like zero carbon footprint, so I'm the hardest person to convince. But if, in these discussions that we're having, we go see places and, and, you know, from the expertise to say Stuart, who's like done entire towns on different systems, is it wrong for us to discuss other options?
I think as long as you're getting the biomass, I don't wanna pivot away from this and just open this up and then become so undisciplined that we end up with nothing.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
You know, that's my.
No, but even in the Johnson Controls report, they talk about other things.
They've sat, and, and I don't think it's gonna go to nothing, I think it's utilizing the knowledge of the people, we may have to discuss other stuff.
Yeah.
It, it's not just looking at.
So you, you want the ability to discuss, visit sites of all realms of.
To come back with, I think, what would be the best option to be presented. This is the, and, and if this is outside that scope and it's not wanted, that, then that's fine, we'll stick with one item. But if we discover that, say we discover a school that's running propane and biomass at the same time, you know, and, and we've got some good ideas about it, like to say, like, these are, this is our suggestion, I, they, you know? I think we got some smart people that have been doing, Stuart's definitely been doing a lot of work, you know, and, and, and I, and I don't wanna.
I mean, it's more work.
I guess I don't wanna take advantage of him, but I also want him to feel like we're going in the right direction. That, that he can talk about other options and say, well, you know, when I did X building in this town, we, we opted to go this way, it's a similar square footage, and it did this, you know?
I mean, I personally don't have an, an issue with that, I just don't wanna, like I said before, I just wanna make sure that we, we're not already turning the corner to look for something else without visiting schools that have, you know, comparable schools that have put in a biomass. Then, then look at oil, look at, look at all of those options, I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me, I wanna end up with the best option.
That, that's what I think, that's basically what I'm asking, is that, I'm not just limited by, when you're just not going down the one-way street of biomass, when we could actually be looking at the other options. Not trying to make it some grand project, I still want it to be focused, but just have, under the charge, the reality was, we could only talk about the biomass, we couldn't talk about getting a guy in theoretically to like that, the whole system was at flaw. Which was information that came after the fact, because that's when we got that report, they talked about all this other stuff. So we have a report. So we have a report to look at, and the reality is, none of the report had any relevance. Does that kinda make sense? I'm not the best speaker.
I, I think that, um, you know, from my perspective, I think that as far as their charge goes, their, their primary focus is still on feasibility in, of the biomass option, while also concurrently looking at, you know, the, the other options to compare and contrast. Because I think at the end of the day, um, if it comes out that the biomass is the best solution, and Brian said, you know, they could study just that, come here and say, we think this is the best solution. It's gonna be a lot easier to sell people on that idea when you can compare and contrast it to others.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it's gonna take.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I just wanna say that, that we looked at, that this is where the wood was, but here's oil, and, and this is what that can do for.
No, that makes sense. It, it's more clear now.
Yeah, I think it makes perfect sense to, you know, as part of your, your, uh, delving into the whole biomass thing, is to see where it stacks up with everything else, and to explore those options as well. Cause like I said, at the end of the day, it, it's not just selling to the people here at the table. It's the selling to the community down the road. That they're gonna be, be able to make a more well-informed recommendation.
No, we just wanna have as much of that. I mean, it could be, biomass could be great, and we can find out that it just doesn't work for our location.
This is, yeah, as, as long as it's a disciplined approach to it, and we're doing our due diligence and all that, cause this is, this, my greatest fear is that we get, we're, you know, that, we're trying to do a whole bunch of stuff, and then we're gonna get put in a position, we're forced to make a decision that is gonna have to happen, that has, you know, we don't have the information to make it, and we're gonna get stuck with something that like we have.
Yeah.
Because that's, you know, that's the, that's the road we're headed. I mean, I, I know it's still serviceable, but how old is it? You know, I mean, it's.
Well, I mean, we're on, the, the state has us on a clock, so.
Yeah, no, but that, that, there, the clock down there might be quicker. That's all I'm saying. The system that we have might be.
Oh, no, yeah, no, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying. That's why, I guess, that what it comes down to with the idea of, can we vote?
I would, I would.
We'll make a.
I would recommend.
Make the recommendation to have the, the feasibility study done, right, and go forward with it. And the only reason I'm saying that, and that doesn't really affect the group, but what that does is affect the timeline that you're talking about. When you looked at timelines, best case scenario, if we get a bid in, we can get it studied on this winter.
Right, and we have an understanding.
We go much beyond this winter, cause we're already looking at, maybe by October twenty-fifth, would be best case scenario, that we accepted the group to come in here. Then they come in and begin it, so they're already into starting a cold season.
Yeah.
You know, we go much further than today, and I'm not pressuring it, but then all of a sudden, they might say, you know, we really wanted these numbers. And from Stuart's experience, he thinks that if they got in like mid-November, he would be able, like that we'd be able to get a kind of a draft of how we're, we're playing out by like mid-February and have it, you know, that the study completed by April, you know, we'd be on a pretty good timeline to set us up for the summer to like, be like, all right, now this is what we have, and this is where we have to go, and hopefully get something on.
And dual-tracking at the same time with investigating.
Yeah, yeah, and we're still looking at systems.
So that when we have all that information, we can make a decision.
Then we can size something and, and do that.
So talking about two different posts, like, talking about a new charge, and then talking about approving feasibility.
Yes, please.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, um, up to five thousand dollars for a mechanical feasibility study. That's why it's the mechanical, right, systems.
Matt with the motion. John?
Second.
John the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? And then with the, with the new charge, would it make sense to say, um, charging the biomass committee with looking at all heating options while still keeping their primary focus on?
That's fine. Just, just allowing us to like look at other.
Yep, I'll, I'll accept a motion, uh, to charge the biomass committee with looking at all heating options while still keeping their primary focus on biomass.
Who made the motion?
Motion by Tony, thank you. Second? Matt with the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? All right, Brian, thank you. There was a lot of.
Yeah.
It only took so long to talk about, because most of us don't know what we're talking about, so.
Well, no, and I'm like learning every day. Sit down with these guys and it's, it's been pretty enlightening. It, but that's why I kinda liked this, is that I just felt maybe we were too bound. And I think, like, from Stuart's standpoint, if we don't really go forward, then the, the committee, regardless of what we did, wasn't gonna have any bearing on anything.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Welcome. Uh, that's it for continuing?
That's it.
Okay. This is Ken, how are you?
I'm good. So I have a few things. Um, Erin Louts, I wanted to share that on October fourth, sixty students and parents participated in the International Walk to School Day. Beautiful morning for a walk, and special thanks to the Common Man for the use of their parking lot, and Lincoln Police Department for assisting with tra- traffic. And Marcus Corey for supplying hot chocolate as the students arrived in the morning. Um, the Elementary Fitness Club has started, continues through the end of October. They meet on Tuesdays after school. And Mr. Louts is currently assisted by two PSU students and two high school students. And there are a total of eighteen students in grade three through, uh, three through five, participating in the club this year. Um, Lori McGinley reports that the Fall High School Student Wellness Day will be on October twentieth. And unlike the Spring Wellness Day, instead of bringing activities in, the students will take advantage of our natural environment. Um, so several hikes are planned, including Greeley Pond, Bike Path, Lincoln Woods, Georgiana Falls, Artist's Bluff, and more. But, and like last spring, students have the opportunity to choose their height, and there'll be a variety of terrains from flat to challenging, as well as a, a different varieties of pacing from walking to running. And they'll be, or, they'll organize and depart during advisory and return in time for lunch. Uh, Tom Hunter C., um, the high school band is going to see the president's own United States Marine Band this Friday night. The free concert is at Concord High School at seven thirty. The band only comes to the New England area every five or six years. Of special interest, the current director, Colonel Jason Fettick, is a nineteen ninety-three graduate of Manchester Central High School. The USMC band is considered one of the best bands in the world, and they're excited to be able to see how the big guys perform. And thank you for your continued support of the arts. And then, um, Dan Adams, the Channel Three slash K connection students will start doing a weekly live show next Friday, uh, October twentieth during the third period, nine twenty-five to ten eleven. It will be news-based for now. Content will focus on school and community events. As the students grow in confidence and skills, will be, they'll expand into interviews, covering local events and so on. It's taken some time to get the students ready for these live shows. Most of them are the students who want to stay behind the camera. Few that I, that I have that can be in front of the camera has ta- it's, it's taken some coaxing to get them to do so. The showtimes will vary, the length of them, um, maybe from a few minutes just to start, and then they'll replay during the week until the next show has been aired. Um, he just expressed what Mr. Courier said. He wants to really revitalize the channel, make it prominent in the community again. In fact, Mr. Courier will be doing a series of segments at some point. He has lofty goals, but needs to do the foundation work first, but excited that they'll eventually get there, so.
What day was that gonna start on?
The, the twentieth. They'll do their first live show next Friday, the twentieth.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Uh, community, any comments?
Yeah. I understand the shop instructors out. I know that. That we moved somebody from another department into sub in that classroom. And I'm just wondering, I guess, a couple of things. Is, uh, if that department's so overburdened, and we're moving them into teaching, what's suffering? The facility or the students in that class?
I'm, I'm not sure, cause I don't have any information on that. So, I don't know how to respond.
It's just my thought process, um.
Okay, I mean, I would say, you can make a, you could contact administration during the, during the week. I, I, we've never been informed of staff being out, so I didn't realize we had someone out, but he could probably better answer a question for you.
Okay. I guess my other question would have to be answered by them too, if you don't know about it, so, all right, so I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. All set? Mark, anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Matt, second. Tony, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions?